Good evening, everyone. We'll call this council meeting to order. We don't have anyone here for the singing of O Canada, so collectively, we will be the choir this evening. So if I can ask everyone to stand as you're able, and I will ask our clerk to turn on the recorder. Great job, everybody. Thank you very much. The... Some of you may think that tonight is a televised Rogers Night, but it turns out that there seemed to be an error on the end of Rogers on their end, and so it's not televised. But obviously, those who are listening through our webcast are... can listen and certainly see it after this evening as well. With that, it's been moved by Councilor Schneider that the minutes of the regular meeting held January 26 and the special meeting held February 2, as mail to the mayor and councillors be accepted. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Any pecuniary interests? No? Any correspondence? There isn't any. So we will now move into our delegations. And the first delegation we have is Moira McGee. Welcome, Ms. McGee. And I just want to remind delegations that they have five minutes to make their presentation.
Well, I can't say to you, like I did to Ken, that I've heard those words before, your worship. What I can say, however, is that when I look around this room, I feel eerily at home. I've lived in the city of Kitchener for longer than I lived in northern Ontario, Sudbury, to be exact, where I had my first suicide attempt at the age of 14 years, Sudbury Yacht Club. My name is Moira Sharon McGee, and I have post-traumatic stress injury of a complex type. Most of it has been because I have managed somehow to be a victor instead of a victim of the crimes that I have endured in our region. I recently ran for regional chair against Ken Seeling, and everybody laughed. Really, everybody clapped, because you know what? I medaled. I got a bronze. I came in third. I brought a delegation there. January 21, it's live. You can check it out. I asked everybody if my life mattered, and nobody was allowed to respond. I asked them then if anybody cared, and everybody turned around and walked out. I'm totally frustrated with government. This here is my MP's prized piece, the Framework for Suicide Prevention and Elder Abuse, Harold Albright. He's actually my MP. He says something on here that I just want to read. "Evils that befall the world are not merely so often caused by bad men, as they are by good men, who are silent when an opinion must be voiced. Right and wrong is just that: these issues are not shades of gray." So suffice it to say, things aren't very easy for me. I wouldn't even know where to begin my trauma, but I've tweeted lots of it out. I will be beginning to tweet out my trauma over the course of the next three weeks before I reach a limitation date, which is February... or no, March the 8, 2015, because I haven't been able to work out my issues around the trauma and the accommodations that I need in our region on any level. So there's a problem with that, and I do believe that are solicitors here. Anyways, I live in a beautiful neighborhood, but somebody in my neighborhood isn't very kind. He lives here. And I think it's really unfortunate, too, that all of this stuff ends up coming out, because it is publicized. And really, people shouldn't have to know the kinds of crimes that I've endured, really. But I guess they have to. And I guess it all becomes public knowledge anyways when you force me to put it in an affidavit of documents, which I think is fundamentally wrong. I've done a lot for our region. This is one of the things that I'm proudest of most. It's the kids' country club, and I put my face behind this with my medically fragile son to provide a real-life example of what it's like to raise special people in our community. It services today 65 local families with medically fragile and technologically dependent children. I've done a lot of other things as well, but I'm not really somebody who wants to spew my guts out there. Is that a timer for me, dear?
It means you have a minute.
Oh, Lord, help me. I have to wrap up. Okay. We don't want to repeat a regional council. I promise I won't do that. I'm going to do my best here.
Thank you.
But my councillor's Yvonne, and she seems to think this is okay. This chap, Gregory Booter, here's all of the police reports. This is the first time that I haven't had a restraining order against him, because guess what he does? He plays hockey, and he plays basketball, and he gets out there, and he threatens to bash my head into the pavement. His behavior has been so bad that the first time he was arrested, Mr. Gazola was representing us. And you know what happened? He wasn't even allowed to return to the neighborhood, let alone near me. This has gone on for years and years and years. I counted up 14 court proceedings, 14 different times we had to show up in court, and my neighbors are being subpoenaed because we aren't enforcing a law that says you're not allowed to play in the middle of the road. Because with the playing in the middle of the road, it's not that the kids shouldn't be playing in the middle of the road. That is not my problem. My problem is the triggering that happens to me when I have to listen to it, and when they are continually on my property, and this family continually harass me and abuse me the way they do. Most recently, the female part of the family actually slapped me across the face, and I had restraining orders against her. The police, I don't know how many times they've been out to my residents, are coming from Highway 24. What the heck is going on? Why aren't we enforcing our bylaws? You sent out a tweet. I have it here, but I'm out of time, I bet you. We all know that what I'm talking about is true. So I have a couple of suggestions. Basically, we find a way for all of us to get together, like we need the government bodies at the regional level, and you, and whoever it is, and we sit down, and we talk about it, and come up with a letter of understanding that says there was a lot of all kinds of misunderstandings, and we figure out a way to keep me alive in the region. Because I'm not kidding you, I'm triggered to the point where I'm absolutely terrified that after managing to meet 31 years clean of a suicide attempt on my life, 31 years clean I have been. I started when I was 14, it went on into my 20s, 31 years clean I have. But I don't have the control over my mind that I need when I'm being triggered. And when you walk into your local bank robbery and you have a gun shoved in your head, let me tell you right now, you are triggered. So I expect every single one of us, this time, to do what my shirt says, which is, don't go with the flow. Stand up. I need one person in this council chambers. I need one person out there in the community that sees this broadcast, that says my life matters, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Moira. Appreciate you coming in.
This is just a small portion of court records.
Thank you for coming in and sharing your story with us.
So it's not a story, it's fact, Barry?
No, I understand that.
So how do I know what kind of go-forward plan you have here? Or did I just come here to spew my guts to the neighborhood?
As you know, Ms. McGee, staff have been working with you to address your issues and your concerns in the neighborhood, and they'll continue to work and assist you with that.
Well, what's wrong with me? How come I haven't heard from them, then?
I believe-
Delusional isn't what I am.
Okay, I believe you have heard from our staff, from everything I heard, and-
No, I've heard that they're too worried about accelerating the tensions on the streets, they aren't going to do anything.
I understand your concern, and we'll... Staff will follow up with you, and we will work to try to find a resolution between you and your neighbors, okay?
So when can I expect staff to follow up with me, please?
Somebody will be in touch with you tomorrow, okay?
And how are they going to get in touch with me? Obviously, via email.
That's the only information that you've shared with us, okay?
So I'll be hearing from somebody tomorrow, and then we're going to start figuring out what we're going to do, right?
Yes, okay.
Right. Because I should be able, at least, if I'm not allowed to go into the community, because the police won't deal with my gun nonsense in banks where I have these stupid flashbacks, can I not at least sit in my own residence, please? Please, at least secure me that.
Thank you, Ms. McGee.
We have a bylaw. I have a copy.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is we actually have a delegation who's just here to answer any questions, and it's with regard to Planning and Strategic Initiatives, number one, 5 Michael Street. And they're really here just to answer any questions. So councillor Singh, do you want to bring that one forward? Go ahead.
Yeah, it's just moved by myself and seconded by councillor Kelly Galway-Seelock.
Okay, councillor Fernandez.
I didn't have any questions about that. I have another question.
Okay. Any discussion on that item? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Okay. On which item, councillor Fernandez? Oh, yeah, I'm going to deal with that.
Okay.
Don't worry, it's on my list. The next item actually is Mr. Drewitz has asked to speak as a delegation tonight on public engagement and public input session. As per procedural bylaw, I'll just need a motion to have him be added on as an agenda item. Councillor Fernandez?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that Mr. Drewitz be allowed to speak at tonight's council meeting.
Okay, seconded. Seconded by councillor Schneider. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried unanimously. Mr. Drewitz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome.
In good faith, I made copies. Is my time moving?
I'll restart it for you.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I'm going to skip the first paragraph, go right to the second to save some time. Back in December 2013, the majority of you councillors made changes to procedures with the goal of promoting more effective council meetings and/or including input from residents. If you remember, I took exception to some of these changes. It was very apparent to several of us citizens, what was behind this was mainly to limit councillors' questions, which became necessary to properly understand an issue being brought up by a citizen and limit engagement by the public. This again became very evident when, at the end of last Monday's meeting, the Chair of Finance stated something like, "This was my fourth public input session, and this one is one of the most positive ones." Really? After the Chair stated, "We are here to listen to you," the public, at the beginning of the meeting, I was refused at the end, even though an opportunity had been given to the public at large, as there most definitely was an abundance of time remaining, and certainly under the imposed rules, only a further five minutes allotment of time in any event. The comment that I had already had my time as a registered delegate does not speak to the true intent of engaging with the public and presenting ideas in a democracy. The last speaker of the evening requested information. Councillor Davy, did you speak with her after the meeting last week? I spoke with her, and she told me what she observed was ridiculous. I suggest one of your measures of a positive meeting is for the public input session to be limited and adjourned before 9:00 PM, not even a two-hour meeting, 1 hour 56 minutes and 25 seconds. This limit for such an important meeting that drives the activity and direction for council for approximately 94% of the activities of the city for the next year and beyond. Most of you campaigned for more citizen engagement, including you, Mr. Mayor. Your idea number 11, the city of Kitchener will be committed to citizen engagement, accountability, and transparency through open government initiative, suppoint, improve how elected officials engage with our community. Tweeting is not engaging. It is only sending out a message that the tweeter wants to get out via social media. Council chambers is where democracy is to take place. You are to represent the citizens. This is not the form for efficiency. This is where citizens should be able to express their opinion without sarcastic and biased questions asked by councillors. What is even more disturbing is if councillors do not agree with recommendations made by staff or by the majority of councillors, several of you show total disrespect for councillors that are truly listening to their constituents. There should be no time limit as to the length of meetings. Efficiency in this corporation needs to take place, starting with the CAO, all the way throughout the organization, regardless of what the employee's responsibility and job requirements are. Again, repeating myself, this chamber is where the democratic process needs to take place respectfully, regardless of time. Just one last point. Pax Watch, including Tricia Wharton, who was a candidate in the last election in Ward 5, who was here at the public input evening last week observing, urges you do not... urges you not to spend $135,000 for e-participation for open government. It seems to us this is just another layer of present communication systems. My and other citizens' experience has been that several-
You still have a minute.
My and other citizens' experience has been that several of you never or rarely respond to questions from citizens, and give only them or they receive either A, no reply, or B, a boilerplate reply, therefore a non-answer.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. As per the procedure, when we have delegations for items that aren't on the agenda, there aren't any questions from council. So thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts with us.
Okay. Can I... Mr. Mayor, can I ask that next time something like this happens, that I truly... that truly an email goes out to me and tells me exactly what I am allowed and what is not allowed? Please and thank you.
Okay, I believe that there has been some correspondence between you and our Clerk's Department?
There has been some correspondence, but that point was not raised. And I do get a lot more... I do get a lot more material from the region when I speak, and what the total issue... what the total expectations are, non-expectations, and that's not what I have received so far.
Okay, we'll make sure you have clear information next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. Okay, go ahead, councillor Davy.
Thank you. Just a point of privilege, as I was referenced in the delegates' comments, just for the record. Although Ms. C. did leave before I was able to give her my card, I did follow up and get her contact information from Mr. Gross, and I was able, as promised, to get ahold of her at about 7:30 PM the following day after... immediate day after the public input session to answer her questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Larry Gordon. Questions on the tenders? Councillor Gazola. I'll go through them one by one. Hydrovac Excavating Services?
I'll move the tenders first.
Okay, you're moving them? Great.
We use it to use it... Yeah, on the first tender, the tender is being let for $460,000, and yet the report states that the average annual spend is 299,000. Why would we... What exactly are we letting the tender for? What are we renting, or what are we getting? Are we buying hours of service, hours of work, or...
To you, Mr. Mayor, yes. This is an estimate. It's not the actual amount of work that will take place. It's put in there as required basis. We use this service, and as the report stated, we haven't used that much in... through the last tender. There's probably a good chance that we might not use that much again, but we need to cover that off to make sure that we have sufficient there if it's required.
So is that what we... we're setting a limit, then? No more than $460,000? Is that what it is?
That is the high end of our estimate of that work, yes.
So what is it... Are we hiring labor here, plus machinery, or what?
Yes, yes, councillor Gazola.
And we don't do any of this ourselves?
I'd have to confirm that. I believe we do have one piece of equipment and do some of that ourselves, but I will confirm that.
Did you want to add something? Go ahead.
Through the mayor, we're hiring for an excavator, vac truck, plus the labor that comes along with the hydrovac truck. We do not, in utilities, have this piece of equipment. This is a labor-saving device equipment that we contract out.
Is it worth looking at having this piece of equipment ourselves, when we're looking at a half a million dollars a year, or...
Through the mayor, we have looked at the cost for owning this type of equipment. Also looked at the maintenance cost for this type of equipment and the staffing required to maintain and operate this type of equipment. At this time, it does not make sense for the city to purchase this type of equipment.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councillor Netzke, is this on this issue? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Not too sure who will answer this, but just looking at the second page, the tenders, the five that have been received, there's such a huge range from the one that's being awarded to the last one, which is like three times the cost. Are they bidding for the same thing, or is there something nominally on here?
Through the mayor, they are bidding on the same type of work. The work that we're requesting to do not only is excavating for our surface task, but also for our water valves. Part of the work that we're asking them to do is to excavate for water valves that are defective. Some companies are not interested in doing that type of work because of the monotony of the type of work, so it's probably an indication that they're not interested in doing this type of work.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the next tender is Fairfield. Councillor Gazola?
Yeah, this... The second is... The second one is for consultants. Why are there... Why is there $43,000 of our own staff time involved if it's... we're hiring an outside consultant?
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor, in addition to the consulting work, we have permitting, we have some testing, we have a number of our staff who oversee portions of this project. And in engineering, they allot their staff time to a project. They charge it directly to a project.
Well, I expected that. Like, the total project is a million-dollar project, and I can see that there would be staff time involved with that total project.
Right.
But this part of it that we're letting tonight is just for outside consultants. And so shouldn't it be purely the fee for the outside consultant? I can see that there would be what you state in that, but that would be part of that million-dollar project, not part of this phase.
Through the mayor, it's engineering's practice that they charge their staff's time to each phase of the project.
Even though this phase is purely consulting?
Through the mayor, there still is staff time in working with the consultants through the design phase and the testing phase of the project.
Okay. Any questions on the stormwater management monitoring program?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, councillor Gazola.
I just... The project is coming in 40% over budget. When do we... When do we stop and say, hey, maybe we need to look at something different? Maybe we need to... I mean, when you're... When you're that far off, what the money you've got set aside, you know, if we had a project at home that was 40% off, we'd have to say, well, we'll leave it till next year, or we'll look elsewhere.
Ms. Fletcher?
Through the mayor, I chatted with engineering staff. They will make adjustments to other areas of the budget. One of the things that they felt very strongly on is, in terms of the stormwater management testing, it's important for them to audit consistent bodies of... consistent body of work, a consistent time of year, so that they can do their analysis, and...
Yeah, but when you're 40% off, doesn't that say you need to look at something different, or do something different?
Through the mayor, I was going to finish with, they also, for 2015, are measuring one additional unit, which is the accumulated sediment volumes. So they are adding a portion of work to their body of work for 2015.
But why didn't they add that to their budget?
Through the mayor, they are going to make adjustments on other engineering projects to cover this project.
Well, then, I appreciate that, but that says everything's wide open. Whenever you need more money, you go to other projects. It really begs whether we're approving the capital forecast, what are we approving? I just think it's good business practice when you're 40% over on something, that you stop and take a second look. And then perhaps, if you have to raid other accounts, that perhaps council should be involved in that decision as to how you're changing priorities. But those are only my opinions.
Okay, councillor Fernandez?
Yeah, I know that we've been doing this work ongoing. So essentially, my question would be, can we not take some of the standard procedures that previous stormwater monitoring has done and use them in the stormwater monitoring program that we're doing for this year? To me, it would seem that we would be able to maybe eliminate some procedures that have been done in the past. been done in the past, in light of the fact that they were over budget so far. I know, I wasn't sure if you, you may not have heard my question, Ms. Fletcher.
Through the mayor, I think what we're trying to clarify is, if I'm looking at the budget breakdown for this project, there's a surplus of money. So I'm, I think that's what we were trying to clarify on a sidebar here. So I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm not sure we're reading the same thing, because I'm seeing a surplus of money.
That's on one triple I dash three. Is that what we're looking at? Okay. But my question was basically, was essentially, can we not use, so it's not really necessarily related to the funding that Counselor Gazola was talking about, my question is related, but we've done this for many, many years, we have procedures that are pretty much repetitive. Can we not eliminate some of those same procedures and really just focus on, like you're talking about the sediment, checking the sediment loading, doing the watering, water sampling? So can we take a different approach to the way we're doing it, because we've done some of the same things for so many years? Really, what we need to understand is a certain portion of this.
Through the mayor, again, in conversation with the engineering staff, they feel that there is a consistent process that they want to run through the eight monitoring stations every year, so that they have consistent information, and they can do their analysis properly. They're also undertaking, in the near future, a master planning process for the stormwater management program, which will be coming back to council, and a lot of this information that they've collected since 2001 will be informing their recommendations on priorities for their master planning process.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Anetski on this?
Yes, sort of similar in terms of the questioning, but maybe slightly different, I'm not too sure. When I look at the statistics on that page three, in terms of the $108,000 that's budgeted for all phases, yet I look at the bottom line B, it talks about this phase work is $108,000, and then you talk about the line between D and E, that there's a surplus from previous phases. I'm just wondering, how many phases are there, and yet the numbers seem to be equal, 108, 108, yet there's $54,000 from someplace else? I'm totally lost, help me out.
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. My understanding is that this is an annual program, so a provision is made every year for the cost of this sampling. Obviously, in previous years, we've been under budget, and that's why this small surplus is accumulated in the account. This year, because of the nature of the program and the way the RFP, or the proposals came back, as Counselor Gazola has pointed out, it is slightly over the budget estimate, but there are sufficient funds within the program to cover the cost of the program this year.
So then, to answer Counselor Fernandez's question that she raised about a deficit or surplus between lines D and E, we're over budget by 40%, then, as Counselor Gazola was pointing out, but because you found other money, then it makes a surplus in line E? Is that the way you read it? Or am I wrong?
The proposals came in higher than our estimates this year, but it was only an estimate that was set before the proposals closed. The balance of this account fluctuates up and down depending on the actual annual results, and in this year, they were able to sustain the overage. They will not be able to sustain a similar overage in 2016, so no doubt they'll look at that before they launch the program again next year.
So we have a surplus based on using last year's extra funding?
And I suspect if you looked at last year's tender report, you would see a line that would say the total surplus, line E, will remain in the account to help fund the 2015 monitoring program. It's the same line that you see in the report here, so that there is a small surplus that's been carried forward to deal with this very sort of issue.
So that small surplus of 15,000 could be carried over to 2016, maybe, if we're looking at this again next year?
It will, but I suspect the team will have to look at the specifications, because this one came in so much over their estimate, they won't be able to fund this sort of a program again next year. They'll need to make some alteration either to their budget or to their scope.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll then move on to the next, oh, sorry, Counselor Singh, you had a question on that, apologies.
It's, the question's been kind of answered through the previous questions already asked of staff, it's more of a comment more than anything. I think Mr. Chapman, in his own comments, made to the point that I was going to make, that when we have overages such as this, that staff do need to look at re-scoping the work, and that's not necessarily for future years, it's obvious it will have to be for future years of having adequate budgeting or scoping it down. But if in a given year, it does come so much greater than what's budgeted prior to coming to council, then that should be something that's, that needs to be reflected. And if staff still see it prudent to proceed forward, there needs to be a rationale within the report of the extras that came in, and why the work can't be re-scoped, or why it's necessary to proceed with the additional funding. I'll still support it, but I think additional information would be helpful when we do have overages like this.
Okay, it's been noted by staff. Any questions on the waste collection? No? Any questions on meter, sorry, is that on waste collection or meters? Okay, Counselor Gazola.
I'm curious as to what's happening, is this, is this a tender, there's, if it is, were there other tenders, or what is this for? We're buying a, it looks like we're buying a software program, what are we buying here? My first question is, was, is it a, are we dealing with a tender?
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. You're dealing with a sole sourcing purchasing recommendation. I'll leave it to Mr. Malcolm to explain what exactly it is that we are purchasing here.
Mr. Malcolm.
Through the mayor, what we're purchasing is the, it's in two phases. One is to look at the SAP projects, or customer relation and billing software that we are underway working through, in order to modify it, to add a meter inventory system to the program itself to assist utilities in monitoring our meters, both gas and water.
All right, that was going to be my next part, my next question, is why not out of SAP? And you're, are you telling me this is a, this is another half a million dollars on top of the $20 million for that program?
Through the mayor, yes, it's an additional charge in order to add extra functionality to the current program that we purchased that was not considered at the time of the tender.
How many more of these are there?
Mr. Chapman.
Through you, Mayor Verbanovic. This will be the last one, as noted in the report, we're seizing on a window of opportunity here. These requirements have been defined in 2014, and if we can move ahead essentially at this point in time, we can implement them with the project that's already underway. If not, the cost would be higher, and the level of integration would be lower. So really, this is our last opportunity to add anything to the scope for that project, because it will be completed by October of this year.
But how, why is this a sole, a sole source? Why, are there, are there, to me, it seems like a pretty straightforward system, why is there?
Through the mayor.
Why isn't there bidding on this?
Through the mayor, Capgemini has been chosen to implement the SAP project for the city. We're utilizing existing resources with Capgemini to do this extra work for us. If we were to tender it out, the pricing that we would get back would be a lot higher, it would delay the project. The new company that would come in, if so chosen, would be forced to open up what was already been done currently this year, in order to implement this system at a higher cost. So we're utilizing the fact that Capgemini is here on site, the changes that they're doing can be handled appropriately and at the time that we're working in the system, as opposed to after the fact.
Are they putting in the whole SAP system?
Through the mayor, they are implementing the SAP customer and relation billing project.
Customer and relation?
Through the chair, they're replacing the current CIS billing system. Yes, they're the only integrator working with us at present.
So that big project is all in their hands?
Correct.
There, but there are other, I didn't realize that was the name of the firm, are there other consultants involved with it all, with this project also?
No.
So they're, it's completely in their hands, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Fernandez.
Yeah, I, one question I asked a little bit before the council meeting, and that was about the position that was underutilized, and it is a bit concerning that we have management staff that's underutilized, something that maybe we should be looking at, making sure that doesn't continue to happen. The other question I have was regarding the fact that this is a recommendation prior to final budget. So my question is, final budget is on the 23rd of February, we're barely three weeks out, is that going to affect implementation of this by three weeks?
Through the mayor, absolutely it will. As noted in the report, this whole project will be wrapped up by October of this year. At its peak, we'll have 90 full-time resources involved in development, so the critical path on this project is extremely tight. The development phase starts next Monday, and a decision tonight will enable us to move ahead and put the resources against it. A three-week delay would take us off the critical path for the project, and my suggestion would be, if we're not able to make the decision tonight, we need to leave it out of scope and move ahead starting next week.
Okay, thank you for that. That may have been something you should have included in the report, just, just that it avoided me answering, asking the question. I know it talks about the critical, the go-live, October 15th, I realized that, but I was really asking about the three-week window between final budget and today. The other question I have for you, Mr. Malcolm, and I appreciate you being here this evening, is that, it just went right out the window, I apologize, oh, I know. You said something about CRB, which was our, my understanding was our old buildings, building system, nope, Mr. Chapman is shaking his head, so I, but did you mention CRB?
Through the mayor, that's what the software is called in today's language, the old system used to be called customer information system.
Oh, okay, okay.
What the terminology used in the IT world now is customer and relationship billing.
Okay, okay, yep, that's, that was the question, okay.
Okay, Counselor Schneider.
Yes, just further to Counselor Fernandez's question, she mentioned the underutilized management position. In the report, I'm sensing that it's underutilized because they're not doing meter management, they're doing this record-keeping task?
Through the mayor, yes, they are doing administrative-type work to ensure that our gas meters are being met with measurement Canada's requirements, as opposed to being out in the field maintaining our gas meter equipment. So what's happening is, in order to ensure that the meters are functioning properly, are being processed properly, we're utilizing manual labor to take care of that process, as opposed to manual, an automated system. By doing so, and you need to have a qualified person to do that process, we had to take it from our technical staff, which means that on the technical side, we are not meeting up with our requirements on a yearly basis, which means that we have to contract those services out to ensure that we meet measurement Canada's requirement on a year-to-year basis.
Okay, and further to that, so if this quote "underutilized" person gets to do the meter management, that will take away the need for outside hired help to do the work and actually save us money?
Through the mayor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that looks to be all of the questions, the tenders have been moved by Counselor Gazola. Do I have a sec, I don't think I got a second to Counselor Singh. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Okay, next, I know they're not registered as delegations, but I see a number of food truck people here, I guess to see the bylaw get passed, so does somebody want to move the, that particular bylaw? Actually, that is the only bylaw. Oh, there's more later, okay, so we can just move the food truck bylaw, moved by Counselor Galloway Seelock, seconded by Counselor Ionitis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. That's been passed. Thank you, folks. Reports of the committees, and we'll go on to. Counselor Ionitis. Yep, go ahead.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Verbanovic. It's been moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Frank Etherington that the report of the Community Infrastructure Service Committee be adopted, items through one to item 11.
One through 11, okay, moved and seconded, any discussion on any of them? If not, all those in favor? Opposed, that's carried unanimously. Moving on then to, we've covered all of planning, so we'll move on to any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay, just one quick item of new business. I'll be bringing a more complete report back at the next council meeting, but as you know, last week, we had the first meeting of the big city mayors since our new council term has begun. I think 18 out of the 22 in total were present, it was in Toronto. We've, we're in the process of developing an election strategy, which will be looking to engage all of the political parties in a vision for Canada's cities going forward. It's really focused on three main areas, infrastructure, affordable housing, and transit. And as I say, I'll share, be sharing more details next, next meeting with you on that, but I just wanted to give you a quick update in the meantime. Counselor Davy.
Thank you, just wanted to provide council a quick update that as part of our issue papers, I've requested the, I understand it was an easy calculation, but the, the impact of the fluctuating oil rates and how the gas prices will affect the 2015 budget, as well as the change in the dollar, how that may affect as well. So that will be coming as, Mr. Chapman, with, on February 17th, or let be final budget date, 17th? 17th.
Okay, thank you. So there not, not being any further new business, any questions and answers? Not bylaws? Understand there's a late starter, and they're being moved by Counselor Marsh and seconded by Counselor Gazola. Madam Clerk?
Yes, there are two late starters, one to amend chapter 101, appointment of staff, and one to amend the zoning bylaw regarding 5 Michael Street.
Okay, and also the confirmatory bylaw, which is item 11B. So moved by, as I said, Counselor Marsh, seconded by Counselor Gazola. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And we'll now go into committee of the whole, and Counselor Schneider, do you want to just do it from there?
Sure.
Okay.
I believe we did move the bylaws, was that?
You moved them for second reading now.
Yeah, okay.
So you need someone to move them?
All right, okay. All in favor of the bylaws? Great. So item two is the sign variances, a mover? Paulson? And questions?
Counselor Fernandez has a question.
Just, just, it says it's changing copy, so I'm just wondering if it's a changing copy with lighting, or if it's just changing copies? I mean, sometimes it's, the difference, I guess, I'm thinking about is, is whether it's just LED lighting, or we've had some changing copy signs that are pretty intensely illuminated, and that was a little bit of a concern for me.
Mr. May?
So through you, Mr. Chair, it is one of the automatic signs, so the copy would be changed automatically, and so what I would say to you is that where we've used these in the past, it's not the kind of system you've seen in, say, some other private sector companies that have a lot of flashing colors and dancing icons, this is very much text-heavy, I would say.
Okay, thank you.
Any, any further questions? All in favor? Opposed? And carried. Item number three, the wattle.
Sorry? Moved by Counselor Ionitis? And there's a question, couple of questions? Counselor Gazola.
I have a number of questions on this new process. To whom, whom does this new corporation answer to?
Mr. Wilmer. Oh, sorry, you're in the chair.
It's Mr. Wilmer.
Thank you, through the chair. It ultimately answers to its funders, and there would be a partnership agreement that each of the municipalities, which are the primary funders, would enter into with the new corporation, and, and so that is its accountability. It would be responsible for reporting annually, or more often if, if requested by, by the It would be responsible for reporting annually, or more often if, if requested by, by the funders, but at least annually. And if, at the end of the four-year period, the funders are not entirely satisfied, they would have the opportunity to reconsider their involvement.
I'm just curious as to how you set up a corporation like that, that I would have, this corporation is going to have a board of directors, and, and administration. How, how do the, the funders legally get in there to control this corporation?
So this, this is not an entirely, through the chair, it's not an entirely new concept here. This is very similar to the way Canada's technology triangle works now, or the Waterloo Region Tourism and Marketing Corporation. They are funded in large part by the municipalities, but also by private-sector funders or partners in the community. And they are ultimately accountable for, for producing results, or the funders would, would have to reconsider their, their participation.
I know that's how it's worked, but I'm just wondering how the legality of it would be, how that, and, and we're doubling up on everything here, so it does concern me that, uh, what happens down the road when you have a corporation like that, and the city of Kitchener, as a funder, says, well, we're no longer interested. We're selling our shares. What, what happens?
Well, through the chair, I think that what's, what's new in this case is because the stakes are higher, we are going to develop a partnership agreement. That is something that, that is, has not been the case in the past with CTT or tourism. So I think that that's a recognition from all of us, that, that we need to make sure that the processes around accountability and reporting are, are clearly established, and that the expectations are, are made clear, so that there's no surprises. If, at the end of the day, one or more of the parties wants to withdraw, that would be their right, and I think we would have to cross that bridge when we get there.
We, we need to know all of these things before we, we venture out with this, do we not? So I'm hearing now that it's, is there such a thing as an incorporated partnership? I'm looking to our lawyers.
Go ahead, Mr. Tansley.
No, I don't know if anything's.
Hold on, wait, hold on. Got to turn someone off for a second. Go ahead.
I don't know of anything called an incorporated partnership, but it's quite common for corporations to be established in which the constituent members enter into some agreement among themselves, in which they work out how the corporation will be governed.
Okay, well, I trust this is all in place before we go down the road. Can, can someone tell me what percentage of, what share of regional tax levy comes from Kitchener?
I can't tell you exactly. I know that 42% of the population is from Kitchener. In terms of percentage of tax levy, it would be in that similar ballpark. It may be one or two percentage points higher or lower.
Don't we know? Like, that's a pretty common, our finance people know?
I'm sure regional finance people would know, but we can find that out for you and report it back.
So I, I'm just sort of driving at how we allocate the shares in this new corporation. Is it, what is it based on?
So there, it's not strictly shares. It's really a funding model, or a funding breakdown. And as, as you will see in the report on table one, which is on page 3-10, the funding is equal for Kitchener, Waterloo, and Cambridge. So even if we don't have the exact number as to what our percentage of contribution to the, to the regional tax base is, I think we can assume that it's, we are a larger city than, than Cambridge and Waterloo ours is probably larger. So in that perspective, this is a good deal for Kitchener, both our current contribution, which is roughly equal at 150,000 to 160,000, and our proposed contribution at 320,000 going forward.
And I appreciate that, but it would be nice to know what the basis, what the basis of the funding is. I know today, we're on the honeymoon, you know, things are fine. It's down the road. It's nice to know what these things are based upon. There should be some kind of a formula or something in place. Now, I've continually asked for financial information concerning this, this proposal, and I've, I've yet to see anything. And I said, the last time it came, I said, you know, how, how can you support something if we don't have, the only information we have now is who's going to pay what? We don't really have any, we don't have any budget estimates, we don't have any plans, just, here's, here's what everybody's going to throw into the pot.
So through the chair, if I recall our, the question, and I think our answer last time would be the same as our answer this time, the board has not yet been established, and these will be decisions of the board. How much the board wants to spend on salaries, how much it wants to spend on investment attraction, how much on marketing, how many staff it expects to have, how much it wants to contract out. All of those will be decisions of the new board, and that board is not yet in place.
But we, but they somehow are accountable to us, and we are accountable to our ratepayers. Should, should we not have some ideas, some estimates as to where we're going down the road on this?
Through the chair, and I think this is something that was touched on, and this, and this issue has now been to the joint councils meeting three times over the last three calendar years. One of the principles that was put forward, and those meetings are in those reports, where we, we want to minimize the encumbrances that we, that we leave, or that we give to the new board, so that it's not encumbered by legacy decisions of others, whether those be CTT, as it gets folded into the new organization, or the eight municipalities as its funders. And so that is, that's a principle that we've held to, to the greatest degree possible.
Okay, that's, we're at time. Are there, any other questions?
There's four other people.
Okay. And you can queue back in, Counselor Gazola.
I'll have forgotten what I wanted to ask.
Counselor Fernandez is next for you. Counselor Schneider?
Okay. Um, when I was looking through the charts on page, sorry, 319 and so forth, one of the things that kind of puzzled me, and, and maybe it's, it's the wording "deliverables", because some of these deliverables are actually not deliverables. And I think that that's what's, because when I look, when I expect deliverables, I'm, I expect to see a product, an output, what achievable results. And, you know, when it's, when I see things like, what's the one I highlighted? Address any regional economic development-related policies. The one on 3-22, where it talks about, while many of the factors that drive site selection are reasonable, a company looking at Waterloo region location, I won't read the whole thing, but that's not a deliverable. That's, that's a, a statement, a vision. I, I think what some of us were struggling with at the all-council meeting was to understand what the tangible deliverables are. And I understand that that may be challenging at this point, because we haven't gone down the road where we have the board of directors, where we have staff, and where we actually have a very clear, we have a plan, we have a strategic direction, but I think it's hard for, for myself to understand where the differences are going to be between CTT, and I know this has been discussed ad nauseam, and where our economic development, or other municipalities' economic development departments are, and where this one goes. I see this as an overarching economic development corporation, but I continue to be concerned about the funding mechanism and the actual deliverables, and the length of time. So, you know, sort of a, a cost-benefit analysis, I guess, if you want, to, to put it in simplistic terms. And, I mean, maybe you don't, aren't able to answer all of those right now, Mr. Wilmer, but.
I'm not sure I heard a question.
Well, I guess the question is, is where are some of the clear deliverables? I'm, and, and my comment would be that I feel a little bit uncomfortable that we're making a decision on funding, that maybe taking funding from other areas of our city that we maybe should be using the funding for. Not saying that we shouldn't fund it to some degree, so.
So on the deliverables question, what you're looking at on pages 322, 323 are the goal statements. There are four goal statements in the strategy. Those goal statements are supported by about 22 action plans, and there are 22 objectives, and then there are 43 supporting action plans. That was all made available to councils a little over a month ago. So those are much more tactical, those are much more measurable in terms of a tangible, deliverable product. In terms of priorities for funding, the funding from this year is not being taken away from other matters. It is one of the strategic initiatives that is being put forward as an opportunity because the, of the increased assessment from the prior year.
In future years?
Well, that's why we're looking for a commitment now, so that council is fully aware of its commitment going forward. So that would be built into the base budget in, in 2016 and forward.
Okay. Thank you.
And next up, you have Counselor Etherington.
Counselor Etherington.
Through you, Chair Snyder. I've got questions, comments, and a proposed amendment, which is in the hands of the clerk. So I'd like to ask those questions first. This corporation, it's spending in excess of $8 million in the next four years. It's going to have nine to 12 directors. Mr. Wilmer, could you confirm that none of those directors are elected people?
Through the chair, yes, that is correct.
And Kitchener, Waterloo, and Cambridge will each contribute $1.1 million during those four years, while the region contributes about $3.3 million. But none of them will have mayors or councillors sitting on the board.
Yes, I confirm that is correct as well.
Thank you. But other municipalities that I've checked with similar corporations do not, do in fact have one or more politicians on the board. Are we aware of that? I guess we would be aware of that.
We are. Our team has looked into best practices for regional economic development corporations across Canada and throughout the US as well, and has, may, we've, together, the steering committee is making its recommendations based on best practices, as well as on local experience. And this is a question that came up at the joint councils meeting. Having elected officials on the CTT board was problematic. Removing them from the CTT board made it more functional.
I was going to ask you why that is. Can you be a little more descriptive on what those problems were?
Unfortunately, I can't. I wasn't in attendance at that time, or paying close attention to CTT during those years. But it is something that was made abundantly clear to the steering committee by the Community Advisory Committee, so members of the business and industry, and local, local agencies with an economic development interest. A number of those people felt very strongly that that was a, that was a weakness in CTT in the, in the early years, and we don't, their advice was that we don't want to go back to that model.
I'm going to avoid comment on why they would say that, but what, what will be the salary of the new CEO of this corporation?
That has not yet been determined. That'll be a decision of, of the board.
And will it be public information?
I'm not aware that it would be.
How many staff will be hired, and will that be public information?
In terms of the number of staff, that too will be a decision of the board. The board's reports to its funders would be public information. So in that regard, the, the details of, of the board's, or the, sorry, the corporation's performance will be public.
And my last question. Will the meetings of this board of directors, the meetings where the corporation spends millions of taxpayer dollars, are those meetings going to be open to the public and the media?
No, they're not. Similar to CTT or the Tourism Corporation today, they are not.
Thank you. And Chair Snyder, when it comes around again, I have some comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
You have Counselor Davy next.
Okay. Counselor Davy?
Thank you, through you, Chair Snyder. So, yeah, my, the concern, I've heard the concern several times now, but oversight. So I think the question was answered, that at present, Mr. Wilmer, there won't be disclosure as to salaries within the corporation, or you're not aware that there will be disclosure of that?
That's right. I'm not aware that there's an obligation on the corporation to disclose that.
Being that it's arm's length, would they be required to, I'm assuming they wouldn't be required to submit salaries over $100,000 as per the Sunshine List?
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, I will have comment as well, Mr. Chair, but I will also have an amendment, because I feel terribly strong, I feel quite strongly about this, and my amendment is very simple, actually. Sorry, I do have one more question. Mr. Wilmer, do you know offhand how many times this has come to? You mentioned three times at the joint council, the all-council meeting. How many times has this come to this council?
I think once for each, so this will be the third time. I think once following each of the joint council meetings.
Okay. So it's my opinion, for a few reasons, not the least of which is that we have a very light agenda this evening, and we're, we're going through this quite closely, but I, I really don't see a need to rehash this on, on final budget day. I think that we can make this decision now, and I'll make my comments as to that, but my amendment will simply be at the bottom of the third paragraph, that we remove the very final line, this is subject to approval of the 2015 budget.
Okay, so next up, you have Counselor Singh.
Okay. Counselor Singh.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. Just the line of questioning by fellow council members gives it an unfair allusion that this is a very unique or different model. Mr. Wilmer, you've referred to the CTT, which is being absorbed by this new corporation. Similarly, is this not just an extension of what CTT has already been doing, but with a larger mandate?
Yes, I think that's a fair description.
And some of the, the terms of reference to their guidelines are quite similar, again, with lack of political participation and the makeup of the board would be quite consistent and similar in its form as well.
To a large degree, yes. I think the difference is that with the new board, we're looking for a skills-based board, whereas with the CTT board, it's a representative board, where institutions or businesses or sectors send a representative.
So greater function and input from the board members that we'd be anticipating. And again, we have a strong history of what CTT has been able to perform in this community as a question was raised of deliverables. We can actually put specifics to how that organization has accomplished economic growth and development in our region.
Yes, that's correct. CTT reports annually and, and reports those, those wins and those outcomes.
Great. Now, the aspect of transparency, it does give me some pause. I can understand the rationale that you've already put forward of keeping this unpartisan and having the political aspect out of this, but more of transparency as to how that money's being spent when it comes to salaries. Can that be mandated by the funding organization in requiring that information be put forward?
So if I understand the question correctly?
Can we ask them, tell us, and they have to abide?
So, so if you're saying, you know, you're funded by, say, $2 million of taxpayer money, we want to know at the end of the year whether it was 1.2 of salary and 0.8 of other, or do you want individual salaries?
I'm guessing we would receive financials, would we not?
Well, it's, I'm, you would receive financials, but I guess the question is to what level of detail you're looking for?
So that's, that's where I was confused. I was thinking, and this is, I was assuming that we would receive financials, which would outline what goes towards salaries. It may not have specifics to what secretary makes how much, but I'm guessing we would receive that level of information.
Yes, I think that would be consistent with what is, is reported now by CTT.
Okay. Just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Okay, next up, you have Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Okay. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Thanks. Actually, my question can follow probably on the coattails of Counselor Singh's. And I know that there's still a lot of, well, there's a lot of information that's been, been given in, in all the meetings that I've attended with regards to this. And, but without the board in place, we really don't have a whole lot of. But without the board in place, we really don't have a whole lot of meat to sink our teeth into at this point, because they're really the ones who are going to develop what the outcomes will be in the shorter term and really decide on what that work plan is. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. It would be, the board would be empowered to establish the details as to how it wants to organize and run the new corporation.
Right. And they'll be in place, if I read correctly, around the spring of this year, and would it be fair to ask them to come to our council sometime before budget 2016 so that we have an opportunity to have that input and that dialogue with them to see where they're going and the direction that they are seeking at that time? Because there will be an increase in the budget, and I know your request is to have it put into base, even that increase, but we would have an opportunity before budget 2016 to probably take a look and dive a little deeper into some of the detailed questions. Would that be fair?
Through the chair, you could have that opportunity if you ask for it. I think that, I would remind council though, that what we're recommending here is that the city and each of the funders make a four-year commitment now. So, you would have that opportunity, but you would be, I would expect us as an organization to honor our commitment to the four-year funding.
No, and I think that's fair, but we would have that opportunity to have that dialogue at that point. Regardless, you know, anything that we put into base, we can, if we so desire, pull it out at any time if we want to. I understand commitments and stand behind them, but we would have that opportunity if things, you know, weren't headed in the direction that, you know, maybe it was set out and we were aligned to, we would have that opportunity at each budget year to look at it.
I'm a little hesitant on this one through the chair, because I, while I certainly fully expect that the corporation would report to the joint councils and make presentations to individual councils, and there would be dialogue, I don't know that the board would want eight municipal councils to be telling it what to do. Once a board is appointed, the board has the power and control to guide the organization as it sees fit.
Right. I think, I think my point is that dialogue, my point is that the dialogue's more important, I think, before the 2016 budget, and I'd like to see something come back, whether it is at an all council meeting or to each area municipality, to just have that discussion with the board and see what their direction really is moving forward on some of the things that are already outlined within, you know, the reports that we have received.
So, through the chair, certainly it is intended that the corporation would report to the joint councils annually, and I think that the end of the first year would, or the first part year, would be an appropriate time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up, you have councillor Marsh.
Okay, councillor Marsh.
Thank you, councillor Schneider. I just want to, my questions were mostly answered, but I wanted to just ask you to reiterate, Mr. Wilmer, your answer to councillor Singh's question about the salaries, did you say, can you please repeat, would we be receiving detailed financial statements above a certain amount or not?
Through the chair, I, it's my understanding that the, that as an arm's length corporation, this corporation is not governed by the same rules that require public sector disclosure of salaries. So, you would not get any detailed information about any salaries. I think that the level of budget information you would get is, what was the budget for the year, what was it spent on, in broad categories? How much was spent on salary? How much was spent on marketing? How much was spent on travel? But not details about any individual salaries.
So, how difficult would it be to add into our motion, an amendment to add that we would require, not that we would be able to change it or micromanage, but would require detailed financial statements on an annual basis to ensure more accountability, because we're looking at, these are tax dollars being spent.
Through the chair, certainly the corporation is accountable in the big picture for the use of the budget monies, but that does not necessarily mean that it needs to conduct itself exactly as a local government would do. For the new councillors, you wouldn't have had the benefit of the report that was completed in 2013 that was presented to a joint councils meeting where we looked at a complete range of options as to how a regional economic development organization might be constructed.
Okay.
One of those was to make it a department of the region, in which case it would operate just like a government. There were pros and cons to all these options, and there were more cons than pros to that one. If this community really wants it to operate like a government, you have a regional government. You could make this a department of the region. But the steering committee, the advisory committee, the community as a whole, recognize that CTT or a new corporation similarly structured has a lot of advantages in not having to operate like government.
I wouldn't suggest that receiving annual detailed financial statements means that the organization would operate like a government. Many nonprofit organizations that are governed by boards of directors receive funding, you know, from different sources, and those funders often will require detailed financial statements so that they understand where their dollars are going, and so I don't see how this would be a big departure from that type of accountability. Can you help me understand how that's wrong?
I'm not saying it's wrong. I think if council wishes to make that a requirement, you may, you may make that as a motion. I was simply saying that, you know, based on, and maybe I'm projecting too much on a theme of questions here, but when there are questions around will board of directors' meetings be held in public, will salaries be disclosed, you know, it's starting to sound like you expect this to operate just like municipal government, and it's not. It's a corporation. It doesn't hold its board meetings in public.
And there are a lot of benefits to that, I understand. It's just about the finances, because I think there was a lot of frustration that I saw, you know, around the arts funding model that we have, help me with the name. Yeah, Creative Enterprise Initiative. And I'd like to see us not go down that road again where we are in the dark. So, I, I'm going to be proposing another amendment to, when it's in appropriate time.
Are there any further questions?
Now, we got to me, and then you've got a whack of people that want to speak up a second time, and you're going to have to figure out how you're going to deal with all those individual amendments.
Okay.
So, perhaps the clerk can put his head around helping you. But just my questions, Mr. Wilmer, can you just give us an update as to where things are at in terms of the other cities and so on in terms of approval?
Yes, so each of the seven local municipalities in the region will be considering a report very similar to this one with recommendations that are just similar to this one. City of Cambridge and township of Wilmot considered and approved the recommendations last Monday. I think Cambridge in its final form, Wilmot as a recommendation of committee to council. I think Waterloo is scheduled to consider them today, and I'm not sure of the schedule for the other townships. I think the region is coming up within a week or so, and with, again, final budget day may be a requirement for some or most of those.
And the two that have passed, that have passed in its present form or with amendments?
In its present form, yes.
Okay. One of the issues I raised at the all council meeting from a, and this I guess potentially will come through the agreement process, is the ongoing makeup of the nomination committee, which in addition to the reporting mechanism potentially gives us the ability to also have a check and balance. In other words, if there's a problem with a particular board, we have the ability to remove them. Is that, you know, as we do, for example, with the Centre and the Square? Is that something that will happen through, potentially through the development of that operating agreement?
Yes, actually, that is something that the selection committee, which will essentially be the one that, to choose the inaugural board, the selection committee will put its mind to that in terms of giving advice to the steering committee on the partnership agreement. But I think that that met with a considerable degree of support after the joint council meeting, that there should be an ongoing role for the municipalities as part of the selection committee.
So, that would give us an added level of check and balance, in a sense?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. So, those are the questions I have. So, you now have four people, councillors Gazola, Etherington, Davie, and Ionitis on your list, and councillor Ionitis has moved it, and councillors Etherington and Marsh have said they have amendments.
And councillor Davie, yeah. So, councillor Gazola, further questions?
A number of my questions have been asked. I'm concerned.
Yep.
I'm concerned about, well, there are a number of issues, but this whole, this whole method of carrying on as to who gets onto the board, that's still up in the air. I just can't fathom how councils can make all these decisions. Could you just humor me though and tell me, explain to me the difference between this new corporation and the CTT? What is the difference between the two? Why are we going there when we've already got this established?
Through the chair, we're going there in order to fill the gaps in the delivery of economic development services in this region. Right now, economic development services are delivered by the local municipalities, mainly the cities, although townships have some resources in that regard, and by CTT, which has a focus on investment attraction or foreign direct investment. Because its focus is on investment attraction, it is not responsible for performing other regional scale services. And so, the key difference is that the new organization would do what CTT does now, investment attraction, as well as regional scale economic development services.
So, why don't we just change the CTT around rather than coming up with a brand-new corporation?
That's an option that was considered, and essentially what we're doing is pretty much that. We would still need to increase the funding, because we're expecting this corporation to do a lot more, so it's going to need resources to do that. But whether it's CTT with a revised mandate or a new organization that brings CTT into the fold, those were, both those options were considered, and the option that's recommended is the one that has the best of all possible, the best of both of those, those different processes.
You also stated that, you know, the region could just set up their own economic development department. They have done that, have they not, all of a sudden now? Out of this, all of, out of all of this, that's another thing that's happening, and we as 42% partners are paying not only for our own economic development, and that, we're also paying for the new regional economic development department. So, what, how, see, this comes to my concern about duplication. How, what can you say to ensure that there's not going to be any duplication, because here we have an...
So, two questions there. Regional economic development function consists of two people. I don't think it's even two FTEs. I think it's one and a portion of one FTE, so it's exceedingly small department.
Today.
But there is, yes, today.
Today.
And in fact, if, well, you can speak to your regional councillor about that, but my understanding is once the region doubles its commitment to the new organization, which it's doing, so it'll be about, well, it's on table one, so it's a pretty substantial commitment. The region, I expect, will have very little interest in growing its own portfolio of economic development. You have my word on it, and I know that I can speak for the steering committee here. We are not the least bit interested in creating duplication. In fact, the new strategy gives us an unprecedented opportunity to clarify and eliminate, clarify roles and eliminate duplication, so that we can make the most of the resources that we have.
Another, in reading the report, we're talking about another special purpose corporation. What is that? Is it another, another company?
Yes, through the chair, and this is really not the subject of the recommendations tonight, so I won't go into it in detail, but you may recall the 2013 report looked at and made a number of recommendations or observations about how the delivery of economic development services in this region could be improved. One of those is on the supply of industrial land, and there were, again, a whole continuum of different options evaluated there, and those options are still on the table. I think that right now, there's a combination of public sector development of industrial parks. In the past, essentially, it's been the cities that buy land and service it for industrial parks and private sector. There's been some, not a lot, but some provision of industrial land by private interests. If the, if and because the dollars involved at developing the east side land for industrial purposes are very significant, it may be beyond the means of any one lower-tier municipality to develop industrial parks of that magnitude. So, it's not impossible, but, and in fact, that's right now the status quo, the business as usual case is that between Cambridge and Woolwich, they would develop industrial lands in and around the airport. But exploring a corporation, a land development corporation, to be the developer of land that is a separate body from the municipalities is one of the other items that was recommended for consideration in the 2013 report. It wasn't as urgent a priority, so not a lot of work has been done to evaluate that, and it's not part of the recommendations before you this evening.
What happens if we or some other area decides not to go along with this? Is that a possibility?
You're in control of whether it's a possibility. If council decides to say no, then that's definitely a possibility. I would be profoundly disappointed if that's the decision of council. I think that the work that this community has invested into these recommendations over the past couple of years is a considerable body of work. There's been an enormous amount of engagement with economic development stakeholders. The advisory committee provided great value, and these are people, community leaders, with a perspective on business, industry, and post-secondary institutions. This community has really spoken towards informing this report and these recommendations. And so, in that regard, I think that the opportunities to question this, and they continue right up till tonight, obviously, but when the reports were brought in 2013 on the study on, in 2014 for approvals in principle, and at the joint council meeting of January 29th, what we heard were questions of clarification, not questions, questioning the overall intent. And I think that by and large, what the community has said, and my sense as to what most of the elected officials have said is, this is overdue, this is much needed, and we should get on with it.
Okay, that's time councillor Gazola.
Well, wait, wait a minute.
You actually had eight minutes.
Well...
Not five, and you've spoken twice, so we have to move on. Councillor Etherington?
Well, Chair Schneider, I completely support the intent of this corporation. I'm opposed to the makeup of the board of directors that will control the corporation. When we're proposing a corporation that will spend at least $8 million of taxpayer cash over the next four years, there's no question that group should be completely accountable to the public, as is the case in other municipalities. I very much doubt that this corporation will be accountable to the public, and I don't think it will be transparent about its activities unless Kitchener and other municipal partners insist on having at least one elected person on the corporation board to keep a close eye on how that money is spent. Our mayor and all councillors were put here by Kitchener voters to directly represent taxpayer interests and act as a financial watchdog when it comes to spending their tax dollars, and we cannot do that if there is... And we cannot do that if there is no representation, no political representation on that board. This corporation will be spending at least $1.1 million in the next four years from the pockets of Kitchener taxpayers, more than that, actually. A similar amount will come from Waterloo and Cambridge taxpayers, 1.1 million each. In addition, exactly the same taxpayers will give them an additional 3.3 million to this corporation through their regional government without any political representation. Every one of us ran for office on a platform that promised open, transparent government at this council. And in this case, we're thumbing our noses at those voter pledges, and I can't believe what I'm hearing from some councillors and Mr. Wilmer. I wasn't aware when I considered this before. I thought this, I still think it's a great idea, but I was not aware that we would have no political representation on this board. It's exactly like the Prosperity Council. They tell us to take a hike when we ask to put a councillor on that board. And yet they're spending public money. Again, I support the aims of the group, but as long as our taxpayers are not represented by a mayor or a delegate councillor on the corporation board of directors, I can't support these recommendations. And I do not in any way agree with the empty suggestion that any mayor or politician on that board would be a parochial impediment to board business. I'm suggesting an amendment to the proposal, that's the one on the screen, and if that change is not passed, I will be reluctantly voting against the recommendations before us and hope that other councillors will give it similar consideration. I would ask that the amendment be voted on separately from the other recommendations and that I request a recorded vote. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councillor Etherington. Councillor Davy?
So following from that, I guess the question I have to ask is, supposing councillor Etherington's amendment is approved and no other municipality votes in favor of this, is this binding, and if this isn't part of it, it therefore takes us aside?
Through the chair, this becomes, this would become a condition of Kitchener's funding, so the new board would either accept the funding with the condition or reject both.
Okay, that's that was what I thought, and that's precisely why I I won't be able to support it. If it was Kitchener's, if the if the amendment was was phrased in the way that Kitchener's preference would be, that an elected member, actually, to be frank, I would probably wouldn't support anything other than the regional chair being a member, for clarity. But if if the amendment was phrased in such a way that is Kitchener's preference, but is non-binding, I could support that, but I am not going to jeopardize this because of that. So I'm just going to make my comments if I can, Chair Schneider. In my four years, this is this initiative is by far the largest issue of trust that I've seen in terms of the municipalities working together as opposed to apart. Even our own research from Compass Kitchener has shown that economic development is top of mind for every resident, and there's no better way, in my opinion, than to realize that the city of Waterloo has assets that we can leverage as Kitchener, the city of Cambridge has assets that we can leverage as Kitchener, even the townships. This is the decision point for us to say that we're stronger together going forward, promoting our region as opposed to operating in silos as we have in the past. World economies are only getting more competitive, and we either just have to decide we're going to get more competitive locally or we're going to fall apart. I think it's it's just that simple. I agree with the sentiment that, Eric, this new initiative cannot be run like government. As we all know, government is not nimble. This corporation needs to be nimble. It need to have the arms-length authority to make decisions based on what comes up. And my concern here, too, is there are seven municipalities, and if we if each one starts picking little parts that they want to implement, then we're just generally showing a lack of trust, and the whole thing could collapse. So with that, I will be supporting this 100 percent, and I did bring forward the amendment to remove it, to remove that final line in the third paragraph. And a recorded vote has already been called. Yes, and I would encourage everyone to vote for this, and frankly, I hope it's unanimous because it would send a very strong message to every voter that's ever told you that the city of Waterloo needs to work closer with the city of Kitchener and Cambridge and everyone else, it would be a vote of confidence for them.
Thank you councillor Davy. Councillor Marsh?
Councillor Schneider, you also have several other people that want to speak.
Okay.
Should we deal with my amendment after we've dealt with councillor Etherington's amendment? Chair Davy? Chair?
Yeah, we would deal with councillor Etherington's amendment. Councillor Davy, you had an amendment and and then yours, so individually and then...
And then you have several other speakers, including myself.
Okay. And who's next?
So you have councillors Ionitis, Gazola, Genetski, Singh, myself.
Councillor Ionitis?
For the benefit of the two members of on council, the new members, part of being on EID Act and 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 hearing some of being on DAC, and you'll you'll hear that, too, Sarah, that one of the things that was overwhelmingly discouraged by them as members was government involvement. In fact, too much red tape. So when you when someone comes here, is wanting to bring their business, who do we go to? Like, let's say Toyota wants to, let's say another company, Ford wants to come here, who do we go to? Go to city of Kitchener? Do we go to city Waterloo? Do we go? Too much red tape. And I think that made crystal clear sense when a couple of local companies left. We want to have an efficient system, and if we're going to implement all these amendments that are being proposed, besides the one that councillor Davy is, and I'll support that one, it might as well just be a regional government initiative, and it would just defeat the purpose. Every economic development seminar, conference, or even planning seminar that I ever attended, the main focus was, we need to have a regional perspective when it comes to economic development. Otherwise, you're dead in the water compared to every other community. It's a global global market. So working together can only benefit our city and the region as a whole. By leveraging all of us together, we'll certainly have a greater appeal in the world economy. In particular, I think this initiative alone will put a a great emphasis on a on a on an area that's gets a lot of attraction with the media when it comes to manufacturing. I think this is the one one area, manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, that will get a tremendous boost to our to our local economy. And again, I as councillor Davy had mentioned, I I encourage everyone to support this, and I I can understand some of the questions about transparency, but if we're going to go that way, again, we might as well just be a just be a regional part of the regional government and then go along with that instead of just spinning our wheels here where we are right now.
Okay, thank you councillor Ionitis. Councillor Gazola?
I had some more questions, but I'm not turned on. I had some more questions, but I'll forego those and give my comments. I don't have a problem with where we're wanting to go. To me, that's what the CTT was. I'm hearing all kinds of great stories, and but now I'm hearing that the CTT has failed or hasn't done what what we had wanted it to do. But this is really, I'm, there are so many unanswered questions. Up till tonight, we've always dealt with this, and approving in principle, approving in principle, which doesn't put anything firm. Tonight, our vote puts it firm. We're going in that direction, that's it. The answers we have tonight, that's it. We don't have any more, not once we've approved it tonight. There are so many questions in my mind that have not been answered. I'm I'm concerned about about the duplication. We have our own development department. The region has set one up. You know, if we had if we had a plan here that says, okay, now we're going down this route, and we're going to, here's exactly what what the this new corporation is going to look after, here's exactly what our individual cities are going to look after, here's the number of people we have now, and here's the number of people we're going to have in the future, you know? We're looking at a commitment for the next four years for the city of Kitchener of $1,160,000, and then we also have to pay 42 percent of the three and a half million that the region pays. So this is a substantial investment on our behalf. And if all the answers were on the table, I wouldn't be opposed to it. But what I'm even hearing now, tonight, is we're not going to be afforded the same information that a lonely little shareholder, when he buys shares on on the public market, receives financial statements and all the financial information about the corporation that he or she has invested in, we're not even sure we're going to receive any of that. There's 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 no accountability to the funding organizations, and yet we, the buck stops with us, we're accountable to to the public. We need we need at least one member on our board of directors, if not more. I mean, what, normally, when you have people on the board of directors, they have they have some skin in the game, they have something in there. We have a, we will have a complete board of directors that, yes, they may have the the best intentions, but the best intentions are going to be for the for the businesses they own and operate. The this, for as an example, the advisory committee that was set up here was primarily made up of business of of the business community. It didn't take, I don't think it took into account all our all our residences. I mean, we, again, I can argue with 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 the concept, and if the concept were laid out with 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 better information and 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 better ways of getting in and out and dealing with it. I mean, we we went through this with the creative enterprise. And where where did we end up? We ended up with 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 no control whatsoever. As a as the issue stands at this point, I'm not, I don't want to be accused of being opposed of going in this direction. We we do have seven communities in this region, and that's worked well, and I think it's the way the this community, the communities around us have wanted to have it that way. This whole question of amalgamation has been discussed over and over, and the people in this region want it the way it is now. So this whole idea that, well, let's throw it all to the region. No, I think I think I think we can put together a good corporation, but we need to answer all of those questions before the honeymoon starts, not after, after it's too late.
Chair, Mr. Wilmer has asked to interject, but I have a point of information before that. I heard a couple of things there that don't seem to be consistent factually, so I'd just like to get clarification on them.
Okay.
I heard that, we've heard that CTT is a failure, and I heard that we won't have any access to financials, and I didn't hear either of those things from staff, so can you please get some clarification for us on that?
Okay. Mr. Wilmer, if you could clarify that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, it was the comment that somehow CTT has failed that I wanted to respond to. I did not say that and did not come close to inferring that. CTT has succeeded, and we want to build on that success. CTT's mandate is foreign direct investment. The new organization's mandate will be broader than that. So this is not at all a comment on any failures of CTT. This is a recognition that the mandate of that organization needs to be broader.
And can you speak to the point of financials?
Only to repeat what I had said earlier, which is that the new organization, through the partnership agreement, would be responsible for reporting its financials to the funding organizations. My expectation is that would happen in fairly broad terms, not not on a line-by-line basis.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilmer. Councillor Genetski?
Thanks. I do have some comments, and I also have some questions, and maybe Mr. Wilmer can help me out here on this. When this new group gets created, will a CTT be dissolved dissolved immediately or sometime in the future?
Through the chair, as explained last on January 29th at the joint council's meeting, the new organization will be up and running by the mid, there will be a start to run by the middle of this year, be fully functional by January 1st of next year, and at that time, CTT would be folded into it. So CTT will continue and will, in fact, continue its momentum through this year, but be folded into the new organization in early 2016.
Okay, thank you. And and based on that answer, with the sort of a changeover and to segue in from one group to to the other, and since the board has not been created nor any staff hired, will the people that are currently involved in the CTT, a staff and a CAO, will they be automatically put on as new board and and hired as staff, or do they have to go through a process of applying for a job and going through that process and then being hired? Help help me out on that component.
Those are matters between the CTT board and the CTT staff. I don't know that it's necessary for council to consider those in open session.
I'm sorry, say it again, I didn't quite understand.
Those are personal matters between the CTT board and the CTT staff, so I don't think this council should be discussing them in open session.
Okay. If, once the new board is created, which is saying this summer, where will they be located and working out of?
Through the chair, the intent is that they will co-locate with CTT and share the space that is now occupied by CTT.
And then eventually that dissolves, they'll occupy that space possibly?
That is the short-term intent, yes.
Okay, thank you. I guess if we had a one-tiered government here, we wouldn't have this particular scenario of of trying to deal with several municipalities and 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 go in that particular direction. I see the conflicts that we have here of trying to have political representation and maybe not having political representation, and some of the background that Mr. Wilmer had pointed out earlier. Yet, on the other hand, we have council representation on certain boards at Center in the Square, Hospital, Downtown DAC, and so having a representation on on this new organization may also have its benefits, although it was also mentioned that it may politically have been a hindrance back in the early days of the CTT. I'm not too sure where to go on this. I see the interest of of having political representation, yet I maybe see some drawbacks as as well. I see the issue of accountability as being a concern, and I do have that because we're giving money, and then yet we'll be further at arms-length from them without any representation on that particular committee and making it even harder to be accountable, them accountable to us and us accountable to to the public. And and again, through the through our contribution as as municipality, comes from my left pocket, and then my taxes, when they go through the region, goes from my right pocket, and it goes to for the region to pay their proportion, have also been on this as well. So, you know, we're paying left and right, yet no political representation. So it's a it's a big dilemma whether this should be supportable or not supportable. And and...
this should be supportable or not supportable. And based on the comments that I've received from around the horseshoe here, certainly a challenge in terms of which way to vote on this, in terms of even all the amendments as well.
Thank you, Counselor Janeky. Counselor Singh.
Just thank you, Mr. Chair. If we listen to our citizens time and time again, they've said to us that economic development is important, jobs matter, ability to afford a household, pay taxes, have a livelihood is important. If as a market, we want to compete globally, where there are places around the world that have a cheaper workforce, lower cost of operation, we need to be able to project ourselves as a stronger economy than we do individually. I think the city of Kitchener has done tremendously well in having a strong economic development, perhaps not as strong as some of the other municipalities regionally. This will help to give that leg up. We can project ourselves as a strong unified economy when we're competing across the world, more importantly, in the states as well, when we are especially focusing on advanced manufacturing, as well as highly specialized clusters in tech. There have been numerous references to CEI. It's an organization that I first supported, and also have been a bit saddened with the performance that it's been able to achieve over the last number of years. But that's not a fair comparable. CEI was funded by us, somewhat by City of Waterloo, very little by Cambridge, none at all by the townships, as well as the region. Whereas this organization is not a new body, we're uncertain of its ability to perform to its objectives laid out and the goals it has. It's a progression of CTT, and I also don't agree with earlier comments that CTT has been a successful, CTT has done very well, and our local economy and part of our CAD strategy of earlier days, discussion of how do we go beyond the 2011 CAD strategy, how do we formulate or change it, and some of the information that we received as our local market, it's quite strong nationally. And that says a lot to our ability to attract good businesses here locally, and CTT has played a strong part in that. So similar to some of the comments made earlier, that we need to make sure that we support and we encourage an ability to be able to market ourselves strongly, and at the same time, show that unification and strength of our local economy to be able to attract the right type of businesses here. And we can't do that if we add a level of political process to this. CTT has been able to do well because it didn't have to go through those adverse difficulties. And I think we need to make sure that we don't limit it by adding a political objective to this organization. We have capacity in future years. Yes, we are agreeing to a long-term contract, but this will come back for greater funding in future years. And if it's not meeting its mandate, we can very well have a future discussion. But from what's presented in front of us, what the local economy desires and needs, this is exactly what we need, and I think we should support it, and at the same time, ask the tough questions as we move forward. Speaking to some of the amendments put forward, I've already kind of said I will not support politicizing this organization. I will support Counselor Davie's amendment to have this approved today. And for Counselor Marsh, I ask the same questions, and this is something I kind of struggle with myself, of having greater transparency. And I think this is, perhaps, it will serve a more of an objective for our citizens to have that greater information, even though I have confidence that the organization will perform well in its objectives and the way it governs itself. But I will support in requesting that the financials, or greater depth of detail of financials, be provided to the funding organizations. So I will support the motion and the amendments, the two amendments that I've agreed to.
Thank you, Counselor Singh. Mayor Vervanovic.
Thanks. And after me, you have Counselor Galloway-Seelock, and then Counselor Marsh for her amendment. Actually, Counselor Galloway-Seelock, Counselor Fernandez, and then Counselor Marsh for her amendment. I think before I get into the main part of my comments, I just want to remind folks of a couple things. And that's, that I appreciate the concern around accountability. That's incredibly important to me as well. But I think we're making, potentially making some decisions here based on what, for some, has been a frustrating experience around one organization. I want to remind council that there are countless organizations that we either give direct money to or significant subsidies to, to the tune of tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars, including all of our minor sports groups, that we don't have a seat on their boards, and we don't get to see their detailed financial statements in the sense of how much they pay their staff. That's a decision of their board and their organization. So I think we just need to keep that in mind, that we're not setting an expectation here that doesn't exist with many other boards that we fund in our community. Fundamentally, I'm going to support this proposal that's before us today for many reasons, but I'm supporting it for one reason, and that's because this proposal will create jobs for residents in our community, and that's why I'm going to be voting for it. In my mind, few things are as important as the work we will both, that we will do both regionally and locally on economic development over the four-year term of this council. The direction that we set will continue to build upon the foundation which CTT has established, and upon the great work that we as a community have done in terms of seeing progress from an economic development point of view that has helped turn this community around, that has created literally thousands of jobs in this community, and has helped us see one of the lowest unemployment rates in the province of Ontario today. Does it require a leap of faith when you're trying to come together with seven other partners, the six lower-tier municipalities in the region? Absolutely. But the reality is, and I've said this countless times before, that we cannot afford to continue competing with each other. We need to work together because our competition is the rest of the world. Our competition is Hamilton, Toronto, Vancouver, Silicon Valley, the Boston area, Austin, Texas, and so on. In my mind, the proposal that's before us is going to help create an opportunity for all sectors. And we've seen the kinds of successes that have happened because of the work of CTT and the work of our own economic development departments in the past. Whether we talk about Rimoa that's come to Cambridge, whether we talk about Google, whether we talk about Square, whether we talk about Motorola, whether we talk about the hundreds of companies that are part of our startup culture now, we've turned this community around because of these kinds of investments. The reality is that, you know what, we've been through a long process. We have a committee in place, a committee that's made up of our CAOs. These are the people that are directly accountable to council, and also made up of people who are experts in the community in terms of business, successful business people. And so if we don't trust them for their best advice and judgment and all of our input, then I'm not sure, quite frankly, why we're even here today. The reality is that I think our credibility as individual counselors, and the mayor, and as a whole, will be judged by how we handle this situation. The other municipalities are moving forward from what we've heard, and I think the rest of them will as well. On the issue of no politicians, I don't believe, quite frankly, that having a politician on the board is going to somehow be the panacea that's going to make this organization successful, nor will it be the thing that ensures its failure. But I think if the people that we've entrusted have given that to us as their best advice, and quite frankly, if the people that were on the original CTT board, which, you know, as we all know publicly, and I'm not saying something I wouldn't say to them, we all know that Mayor Craig and Chair Seeling haven't always seen eye to eye, but when they see eye to eye on the notion that there shouldn't be politicians on the board, that gives me pause for thought that, you know what, maybe there shouldn't be politicians on the board. So I ask us to, you know, recognize that it does take some give and take through all of this. You know, I know there's a motion coming forward, an amendment coming forward from Counselor Davie, which I can support. I can support the notion of referring these two ideas that Counselor Marsh is bringing forward, because it's simply saying that we ask the steering committee to consider them, and I think you need to add the words, "the steering committee of the municipal partners," but we're asking them to consider it. It's not making it mandatory. They can consider that and ultimately make a decision as part of the overall process. So I can support that, but I've expressed my concerns and reservations in terms of why I don't think it's necessary. You know what, if Counselor Etherington wants to suggest the same thing, I can support a consider, but a requirement that potentially will see all of this fall apart, I'm not prepared to do. So I would really urge council to think about the big picture, and think about what the future of our community and future generations of people in our community will be like if we don't continue to move forward in a proactive way.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Vervanovic. Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
Yeah, I can be much briefer now, because I think Counselor, or Mayor Vervanovic stole every single one of my points. So I initially had some concerns with regards to the funding, and I still have the inclination that the region should be looking after it, because there is only one taxpayer overall. But I've been able to read, having brought that up at budget, and read the rationale behind it, I can understand, and in speaking with regional counselors, why this funding model's been put forward. And I think that the funding model that has been put forward is a good deal for the residents of Kitchener. The other point that I just wanted to make is the duplication of this, or the perceived duplication of this corporation, has been answered over and over again. I've attended all three council, all council meetings, and I've been at all the meetings here that have, every time it's been asked, and every time it's been answered. And it's very clear that there is separate mandates, and if there isn't, our staff in economic development will continue to be involved in this corporation, and will be able to make sure, and I know the CAO will make sure, that there is no duplication of service, and that we're just continuing to work together. Because that's really what it's all about. It's not about amalgamation. It's about prospering together and focusing on driving our economy regionally, which is a benefit to all citizens of each municipality and township within the region. We have to remember that we're gonna get an update from the corporation on a yearly basis. That's what we get from CTT now, and that's what we can expect to get from this corporation as well. And that always includes financial statements. It may not be as detailed as some of us would like, but it'll be the same type of an annual report that is given to the public, that'll have a line that says salary, that says administration, that says, you know, those overarching pieces, and we can feel comfort in knowing that, and being able to ask those questions at that time of the corporation. And my other point that I was gonna make was taken from Mayor Vervanovic with regards to, we give millions of dollars to other organizations in our community, millions of dollars. I don't even remember what our grant budget is, but it's millions of dollars to other organizations, some that are gonna get more than this corporation's gonna get. And we've never asked minor soccer, minor hockey, arts organizations to have a political representative on their board to oversee that, and I think that we have to keep that in mind. But yet, we get the same type of financial statements from those groups on a yearly basis, and continue to give them money that we can expect from this corporation moving forward. So I really think that we just, we need to move on, and I've recently checked Twitter, and it looks like Waterloo is also in the, they've passed their budget, so it appears as though their budget would include this as well. So it appears as though they will have supported that as well. So I think we need to continue to move on. I think we need to look like a willing partner in what is gonna be something that has the potential to be just great for our community all around, because economic development is something that helps our community prosper.
Thank you, Counselor Galloway-Seelock. Counselor Fernandez.
Thanks. I've attended all of the, all council meetings, and I've been here for all the discussions. And each time, I have stated my concerns on various levels about the regional economic development strategy. The, I see there is a business case to be made, and I see that there's been a tremendous amount of work that has been done, and I understand the rationale for this organization, and I understand that there are, there will be benefits to our community. My only concern will be that when we hear that you can make, maybe make changes a year, and I stand corrected, to the process in a year or a couple of years, I think I know how that goes. Often, we don't make changes, because everybody else is going along with the way that organization is running. So I think that although it really adds a level of complexity by having an elected representative from Kitchener sitting on the board, I think if we decide to have an elected representative for the first year, while everything is starting to roll along, and we have just that level of comfort, if that's all we need for that level of comfort, because we are spending a significant amount of taxpayers' dollars, citizens' dollars, and their taxes are important to them, their dollars are important to them. This is the second time today we will be, we have been asked to make a decision outside of our final budget day. You know, I don't feel comfortable about that. I think that that's jumping the queue, in a way. There's a number of decisions that we could make before budget day, and I don't think it's fair when we want to see the entire picture. So I would not support moving this out of budget day. I think that there are a lot of pros to where this corporation is going, but I really do think that having an elected representative, even if it is for the first year, and then there's a step back. There are lots of boards, I sit on a board as well, that is a smaller independent board, but there's a little bit of oversight from my perspective with regards to how that money is spent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez. And now Counselor Marsh.
Thank you, Chair Schneider. I just want to thank all the counselors who've, you know, shared their arguments regarding the philosophical reasons, you know, why we need this strategy to go ahead, and of course, the practical reasons of more jobs. And I want to clarify, I am hundred percent in favor of this strategy. I am not questioning the need, and I'm not questioning the intended goals and deliverables or action items that are before us. I think that it's a very strong plan. I just would urge us to, I would urge my colleagues to consider supporting my motion, because it does, as Mayor Vervanovic pointed out, it does not tie us, tie us to this one way or another, but at least we can make it clear that the largest municipality in our region is interested and would very much want to have a higher level of accountability. I understand that the first section of my motion would be, from what Mr. Wilmer said, that it is actually probably in the works as it is to maintain the selection committee as a standing committee type of thing, but this is, I had written this before that was said. I'd like to keep it in. And the second one would be to just, to see the detailed financial statements. I do have one question of staff, that is, you know, would we, would the detailed financial statements, if we went ahead with this, if it was passed, would those financial statements be required to be public, or would they potentially be brought to us in caucus? Would that be a possibility?
So I'll comment briefly, and perhaps Mr. Chapman can help elaborate. So the new organization, as does CTT or the Tourism Corporation now, has an annual general meeting at which audited financial statements are presented, and that becomes a public document in their annual report. So I'm not sure if, and maybe Mr. Chapman can help, if there's a common understanding about what detailed financial statements would mean. If it's anything, if it's exactly what's in the audited financial statements, no problem, that will be delivered anyway. no problem, that will be delivered anyway. But if it's something different, that I can't really speak to.
Through the, through you, Mr. Chair. The only two reasons why I would see that we would have an obligation to maintain any information and confidence would be, one, if there was personal information about identifiable individuals. So if the board disclosed, for example, salary information of individuals that we were not obligated to release publicly, there might be an argument to be made there that the corporation has an obligation to protect that. The other one, which I don't think is as clear-cut, would be any obligation that we would have under Freedom of Information legislation to protect confidential financial information that relates to the economic interests of another organization. I think in this case, it may be difficult to identify where their competitive position would be threatened if their detailed financial information was made available. But those are the two areas potentially where there may be an onus on the city to protect that information.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I, we're not even looking at my motion at this moment, so I just want to turn to Counselor Etherington's, uh, motion. I just want to publicly state, as I've told him ahead of time, ahead of the meeting, I won't be able to support his amendment because I, I don't agree that we should have a politician on, on the Board of Directors, especially just having one politician, you know, is not going to make or break the decisions. And, um, and I do, uh, from, from being at the all committees meeting, uh, in January, I, I really took to heart some of the comments that were made from people who had more experience, that, that political, making it political on the board would, would be a hindrance to it. So I unfortunately won't be able to support that motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Marsh. Are there any further comments in the queue, Mayor Vervanevic? Okay. Then we would need to consider Counselor Etherington's amendment. Do we have a mover on that? Okay. Move? Moved by Counselor Fernandez.
He's moved it. You need a seconder.
Oh, second, okay.
Actually, you don't need a seconder, we're in committee of the whole, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, through the chair, if I may interject, at risk of prolonging the discussion, it might be helpful to clarify whether the municipal partners means the councils or the Steering Committee, and also to consider whether the term, the, the phrase, "consider and support a proposal" is clear enough. Is this a proposal or is it a condition?
I'll click you in in case you want to respond, Mr. Counselor Etherington, for Counselor Schneider, who's chair.
Yes, we could clarify, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Wilmer, I'd be perfectly happy to take out "consider" and just leave in "support." Support a proposal. That was one of your questions?
Yes, so, uh, the, the first question was whether the municipal partners means the Steering Committee or the councils.
It means the councils.
So I think what, what you're saying then is that the councils would have a conversation. This is a proposal, you'd want to hear what other people have to think about your proposal, but it's not a condition of your funding or of any decision you make.
No, the way I intended it was a condition.
So it might be clearer then if the City of Kitchener takes a position that is a condition and encourages the other municipalities to consider taking a similar position.
I'd be okay with that. Do you have some wording in mind, Mr. Wilmer?
No, it's your motion.
I'm just looking, I'm just looking to help if that's okay, Chair Schneider.
You go ahead, Counselor Galloway-Seelock.
I'm wondering if it's just as simple as taking out the word "consider" and changing the word "proposal" to "condition." So it would read "development strategy that supports a condition where a mayor's blah, blah, blah," and it would continue on.
Yeah, that would be fine with me, Counselor Galloway-Seelock. It does not, however, address the last point Mr. Wilmer just made. And again, I have no problem saying that, uh, that in order to have an elected representative directly accountable to taxpayers, Kitchener Council requests that the municipal... Somebody took it away on me.
I'm sorry.
What did we change partners to? Kitchener Council requests that the municipal partners of the proposed economic development strategy support a proposal where the mayor's and the rest stays intact.
Proposal or condition?
Condition. Sorry.
Through the chair, if I may suggest then, I think what's intended here is that the City of Kitchener, the City of Kitchener's support for the new organization is conditional on having one elected official on the board.
Right, if this passes.
That, that would be one part of Counselor Etherington's motion. Second part is that the, uh, the other municipalities in this region consider, uh, taking a similar approach.
Is that your intention, Counselor Etherington?
Yes, it is. I'd like to see it written, though.
Yes, I think that would be helpful for all.
Baptism by fire tonight.
I think so.
Yeah. Welcome to my world.
Yes.
Give the clerk a break.
Yeah, we'll give the clerk a break here, but just to, uh...
Okay. The clerk has said that you can deal with the other part if you want.
We can. Okay, okay. So moving to Counselor Davy, if you could just remind us of your...
Certainly, it's very simple. I actually closed my... So if you take a look at the recommendation, the third paragraph, you basically just strike the bottom line subject to approval of the 2015 budget.
So with Counselor Davy's motion to strike the final line of the third paragraph, striking the line subject to approval of the 2015 budget. All in favor?
A recorded vote?
Sorry. And that carries. Are we close to returning to Counselor Etherington's?
Mr. Wilmer? Thank you. So the, just to be clear where the inserted words should go, I'll read it in its entirety, that in order to have an elected representative directly accountable to taxpayers, the City of Kitchener's support for Waterloo Regional Economic Development Corporation is conditional on the mayors of Kitchener, Waterloo, Cambridge, and the townships, along with the Chair of the region, rotating each year through a single position on the Board of Directors at the corporation. And further, that the other area municipalities and the region, I guess, as well, we should have put that in, that the other, the other municipalities, we can just strike "area," be requested to impose a similar condition.
Is everybody clear on what we're voting for? All those in favor, please rise. And that is lost. And our third amendment from Counselor Marsh.
I borrowed Frank's wording and now I regret it.
Apologies, I didn't hear, or maybe there wasn't a response to, um, Mr. Wilmer's question on whether the financial statements are beyond the regular audited statements or not. Was there a clarification on that? So I think this is a question for Counselor Marsh, and, uh, so the question would be, well, perhaps she's, she's got, so...
I'm sorry.
The question is, is, if I understand it, Counselor Davy's looking for clarification. When your recommendation or your, your, your motion refers to detailed financial statements, is that anything over and above what would normally be, be considered in an annual report as an auditor's audited financial statement?
I don't know. If I may?
Go ahead.
I don't, thank you.
Nope, you clicked off. Hang on. Oh, hang on. Go ahead.
So based on the discussion earlier, my understanding of detailed financial statements was to look at statements that would go above and beyond, uh, a basic line item for salary, a basic line item for administrative costs or whatever. I don't know, though, how detailed the audited financial statements would be. Would they go beyond the, no, those basic categories? So it would be closer to a line-by-line, uh, set of financial statements that, that the, the board would see. That's, that's what I would like to see as well.
So further clarification then, and I'm not sure there's an answer to this or not, but since it is further than regular audited statements, presumably extra information would have to come to us in caucus, is that... I'm looking to staff for a response on that.
Yes, I think, in my, from what I gathered from his answer before, then that, yes, that would come.
Okay. Uh, Mr.? Through, through the chair, only the information that is protected under privacy legislation or to protect the, the, uh, the competitive business of the corporation would be, should be received in, in camera. Everything else should, could be received and open. Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, if you could, if you could vote on A and B separately, I'd appreciate it.
Sorry.
If you could vote on A and B separately, I'd appreciate it.
A and B separately?
Thank you.
Okay.
And again, through the chair, if I can interject, on A, I see the additional wording here, "selection committee of the municipal partners." Just for clarification, right now, the selection committee consists of 10 people, five of whom are municipal elected officials and five of whom are private sector reps from the advisory committee.
Yeah, that was not my addition, and I'm happy to remove the addition. Unless, Mayor Verbenevic, did you think that that was important?
No, no, I, I think if I can just help you here, I think what Mr. Wilmer's saying is the committee right now is five and five, and I think what you're saying is that that committee should continue to be in place, right?
Yes.
That the, the selection committee should, so then I think it's fine the way it is. Yeah, well, she's saying "consider," number one, it's not a requirement in both of these, correct?
So do you think we should keep in A, the additional wording of the municipal partners, or should we remove that?
No, I think you can leave it there. I think the only point that Mr., that Mr. Seeling was making is that that selection committee is not just politicians, it's five and five, so he just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that.
Yes, I'm aware of that.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, is council looking to reduce it to a five-member committee that's just elected officials or maintain it as a 10-member committee?
I, I am proposing that we just maintain the basic selection committee that is currently in place, that includes all five mayors plus the other five private sector.
So my suggestion would be clearer if you, if you strike out the added words.
I agree.
So it's maintaining the selection committee as it is now.
Okay, thank you. So, um, any?
Okay, so, uh, it's been requested that we vote on these separately, so on part A, maintain the selection committee as a standing committee to appoint future board members as needed. And a recorded vote has been called. And that carries. And for option B, require detailed financial statements to be submitted to each partnering, partnering municipality on an annual basis. And again, a recorded vote has been called.
And Mr. Chair, again, that's just "consider," it's not a requirement.
Consider. Okay, consider.
That's right.
Yeah, just want to make sure that people are clear on that.
Okay, because the wording...
Consider a proposal to require, yeah.
Okay, those in favor? And that carries. And now for the, uh, the motion, the full motion is presented to us.
As amended.
As amended. Thank you, Mayor Vervanevic. And a recorded vote has been called again. Those in favor? And that carries. And could I have a...
Item four?
Sorry? Okay. Yes, sorry.
You have Counselor Gazola in the queue.
Okay, the agreements for youth navigators. A mover?
I moved it.
A mover, thank you. Questions? Counselor Gazola?
Yeah, I'd, um, are these, uh, two new full-time positions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. These are not positions with the City of Kitchener, they would be hired and supervised by Horizon.
So they, uh, they don't report to the city at all?
That's correct.
But we pay for them? Is that right?
As outlined in the, in the report, we'll be, uh, paying for half of that with the region of Waterloo, paying for the other half.
That's our other pocket, right? The, in the report, you'd state that you're gonna, and again here, this is a 2015 issue. Is this subject to, uh, to budget, or is the decision again going to be made on this tonight?
Through you, Mr. Chair. This isn't a budget request, um, the City of, um, we have, uh, reallocated funding in our general... The City of, we have reallocated funding in our general provisions account to, to pay for this portion.
Well, the money, the money, where did you get the money in the, in the general provision account from?
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have deferred two projects in our general provisions account to 2016 in order to redirect resources towards this.
So you're taking the money out of there? So it's coming out, it's coming out of our 2015 budget?
That's correct.
What are the two projects that are reprioritized?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the two projects are signs for two community centers, we'll be deferring that to 2016.
Signs?
Signs, that's right.
So we didn't really need them?
No, we still need them. However, we, we need to reprioritize them if we are going to consider this.
We also passed in dealing with the grants, an additional grant to the House of Friendship for this area. Is that, that's over and above this, this issue here?
That is correct.
And how much was that additional amount?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I believe the additional amount was around $27,000.
Thank you.
We also have Councilor Fernandez in the queue.
Councilor Fernandez?
Thanks. I have to say that I'm a little bit concerned about the to-sign deferral because I suspect it would be the one that's at the Dune Pioneer Park Community Center that's going to be deferred or not.
Through you, Mr. Chair, no, it's not the ones that have already been put in the queue, so Mill Courtland as well as Dune will continue as planned.
Okay. The one question I did have, I think the, the word "youth navigators" may be a bit of a misnomer. I had some concerns that were raised. They're, they're not going to be youth themselves, they're actually working with the youth.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. They'll be working with youth.
That, that, I just wanted to make sure that, that's what I understood, but I wanted to make sure that that was a clarification. The other question I had was to, my understanding is that there will be some close work with our police community liaison who's already been working in that area, and that, that will happen as well, continue to happen.
Through you, Mr. Chair, that is correct. There's going to be a number of partners at these, that will be working together on this.
Okay. My one small concern would be that this, that our staff in that, at that center be removed from dealing, working with this, that it should be really a separate entity. So just, just so that there is no confusion or impact on our staff, that these individuals and the police services are able to work independently through any concerns that may arise within that community without implicating or impacting our staff at that community center. Is that how we see this moving forward?
Through you, Mr. Chair, if I understand the question, the youth navigators will be working with Horizon, with youth. The partners that'll be working within the community will still be doing their own jobs. We will be coming together to collaborate, though, on how we can best utilize and leverage each other's resources for the best impact in the community.
Okay.
It doesn't negate the individual services that each of the organizations provide to people within that community.
Okay, all right. I think you and I may have to have a conversation offline about this. A little bit, my questions may be a bit too detailed for this time of night. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez. Any further people in the queue? Okay. So we need to vote on this, so a recorded vote? Moved? You moved it? Okay, moved.
It's not recorded, moved by Councilor Fernandez.
Okay, moved by Councilor Fernandez. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries.
Is that unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Moved that the committee rise and report?
Yes.
Mover?
No, I just moved that.
You moved it? Okay, thank you. All right, that the proceedings and the recorded beneficiary interests and conflicts taken in the meeting of the Committee of the Whole held the state as attached here too and forming part of these minutes are hereby adopted and confirmed.
And that's moved by yourself, seconded by?
Councilor Marsh.
Councilor Marsh. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and it's been moved by Councilor Marsh, seconded by Councilor Gazola, that the bylaws listed on the agenda for third reading be taken as read a third time, finally passed and numbered serially by the clerk. All in favor? Opposed? That too is carried, and it's been moved by Councilor Davy that we adjourn. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried.
All right. Oh, yeah. Should have landed in there, that would have been even better.
Really good job.
Oh, yeah.